Today's meeting with the Rules and Open Government Committee to order, and we'll start with roll call, please.
Candelaus.
Here.
Duan.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Akemi Absen.
Cohen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The first item is our second review of the agenda for next Tuesday, October 7th, council meeting. It's a 9:30 closed session and a 1:30 regular session. The consent calendar starts on page five and continues on pages six, seven, and eight. Section three, we have just one item that's not recommended for deferral, which is item 3.4, a master service agreement for consulting services for citywide planning activities. And that's it. There's an ad sheet as well, and we'll go to public comment if there is any.
No public comment.
All right, back to the committee.
Move for approval with that sheet.
Okay. Vice Mayor Foley.
I have questions.
I didn't notice.
I didn't notice.
You didn't notice that I, I mean officially, I had my hand raised.
I know.
I don't normally do. I normally just say, hey, I want to say something.
That's why I was sitting.
I know, I know. So, Lee, I'm curious. There's not a lot on this agenda. There's several close consent items, but has there ever been an opportunity for us to cancel a city council meeting and put everything on to the next council meeting? I mean, it's, this agenda is going to, I'm not going to jinx it and say when I think the meeting will end, but there's not a lot here because a couple of the items were pulled, and the one that isn't consent isn't probably a controversial item. So, is there anything here that's time sensitive?
There are a few consent items, and then the planning services is something that would be good, would be good to be heard this week. If we had a meeting the following week, we could possibly defer a week, but we actually don't have a meeting on the 14th.
Right.
Our goal is to have you out early, which is something that used to happen quite regularly around some of these smaller agendas.
Okay, well, I will just say getting out early depends on the council to commit to that as well. But I appreciate that response. Thank you.
All right, we had a motion, now a second, and let's vote. All right, motion carries four zero, and we do not have a meeting on the 14th, so we don't have to review that agenda. We're going to move on to our consent calendar where we have four items. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, back to the committee for consent.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, let's vote on consent. Motion carries four zero on consent. All right, we have our two, we have two action items today on our agenda. The first is the city investment policy. We received a workload, author, a workload analysis form from city staff. We did hear from Councilmember Ortiz when this came forward a couple of weeks ago. I don't know that we need to do that intro before we go to public comment, so let's go to public comment on this item.
We have a couple of public commentators. I'm going to call the names Shannon, Jeremy, and Lucila. Please go ahead and make your way to the podium.
Good afternoon. Jeremy Bruce, Amigos de Guadalupe, Center for Justice and Empowerment. We urge the Rules Committee today to direct city staff to report on the trade-offs associated with divesting from corporations that collude with ICE and reinvesting the money into our community programs. In this moment of escalating detentions, deportations, and fear, the city of San Jose must cut ties with corporate corporations that commit violence against our families and instead stand united with our communities and immigrant loved ones for safety, dignity, and justice for all. I'm proud that San Jose has a long history of protecting its residents and a greater history of uplifting our diverse immigrant population. I urge the Rules Committee to continue this legacy by ending our relationships to companies who profit off of ICE's violence in our immigrant communities. Our city of San Jose should instead invest this life-changing money in children and education, in families and housing, in workers, and our basic needs like healthcare. This memo's investment analysis will not require substantial resources, and it will substantially pave a brave path towards community empowerment. A budget reflects our city's priorities, and our priorities must reflect that we are stronger when we stand for safety, human rights, and justice for all our people. Thank you.
Hello, members of the Rules Committee. My name is Shannon Zhang, speaking on behalf of the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. SVCN stands with Immigration, Protection, and Empowerment Network in supporting the item to direct city staff to report on divestment from corporations that work with ICE and instead invest that money into community programs. Examining where the city chooses to put its money is a crucial point in the city's commitment to supporting and protecting its immigrant community. ICE is an extremely well-funded entity with the Trump administration allocating $75 billion across four years with the passage of H.R. 1. Considering this, it is imperative that the city's partnership with corporations aligns with its established goals to support immigrants through investing in their housing, education, and healthcare. The city's budget needs to be reflective of its values, and we call on the city to separate itself from entities that profit off the suffering of immigrants. And we especially thank Councilmember Ortiz for bringing this to the Rules Committee. Thank you for your time.
Calling the next batch of names, Akemi, Ms. Rain, and Lawrence.
Good afternoon, Rules Committee members. My name is Lucila, and I'm here with Working Partnerships USA. I think it was in 2014 that the city first approved the Welcoming San Jose Plan, a plan in which it proudly proclaimed the, you know, how proud we are of the diversity that we have and that we are a safe haven for immigrant communities. Continuing ties with corporations that profit of the attacks and the inhumanity that is happening at this moment does not go well with that plan, and so I thank Councilmember Ortiz for bringing this forward, and I urge you to approve. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anzu Schaefer. I organize with San Jose Against War, and I'm here to call for an immediate divestment from companies that invest in US ICE. Throughout the Bay Area, progressive investment decisions are being made, which I'm sure y'all are very well aware of. How in Richmond, in May, adopted a policy restriction, restricting investment in arms manufacturing, border surveillance detention, and mass incarceration. Progressive divestment decisions are being made in Hayward, which divested 1.6 million from companies profiting from the Israeli genocide of Palestinians in early 2024, and in Alameda County, which divested 32 million from Caterpillar, another genocide profiteer. More recently, Dublin City adopted an ethical investment policy, which restricts investment in companies that develop or manufacture commodities that facilitate violence or war, engage in border or mass surveillance industries, and/or are involved in mass incarceration or detention. It can be done. I commend Representative Ortiz for her steps taken towards starting the conversation, and I urge the city council to push for the conversation to happen before it's too late. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Lawrence, and you've remembered me, obviously. I spoke yesterday as well, and now I'm speaking here today to all of you at the committee, urging all of you to plead, to direct city staff to report on trade-offs associated with divesting from corporations that collude with ICE and reinvesting money into large community programs. As you may know, ICE has spread fear, whether if it's concealment and other matters. It's very important that they must be identified, and we need to do everything we can as a community to protect, to protect the people of San Jose. This isn't about, we're not going to do any trade, we shouldn't be focusing on time on trade-offs or like wasting time on which side you're on. We need to be focused on people first and San Jose first. And as of today, we need to do everything we can because a lot of people are getting worried, people are getting scared, and people are fearing for their lives. And it's right now more, more apparently more than ever that we must, we have to, we need to end relationship with companies that profit off of ICE, and we must invest in life-changing policies to help those in need. Every individual here in the city matters, and you are elected to do this job for a reason, to represent the will of the people of San Jose, and that is your duty. And next, last but not least, we must continue to reflect on our priorities, which is why we need to stand for our safety, human rights, and justice for all people. You were elected to these seats for a reason, and if your job is to go the other way, then the question is, why are you elected in office? So, I just want to quickly conclude. Please, please, I ask the committee to report on the trade-offs and divest on corporations that work with ICE. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Rules Committee. Akemi Flynn with IPEN, the Immigrant Protection and Empowerment Network. I'll be quick and mostly say me too. Thank you to Councilmember Ortiz. We are not in normal times, and so therefore we appreciate your leadership and thinking about all the tools that we have to protect our community. So, thank you very much for supporting this memo.
Also calling Kimberly.
Hello, Rules Committee. How are you doing today? My name is Ms. Rain Mendoza. I'm with Amigos de Guadalupe. And I also want to mention Grupo de Justicia Emigratorio. That's immigration justice group. That's a committee. Those are the ladies, they do all the work. I want to give a shout out to them here publicly. We need to keep doing the work we're doing, okay? This is another step. Thank you, council member, for bringing this forward. This is another step to protect our community, and like I said to the county of Santa Clara, okay, you got to put your mouth where your, where your actions are, right? And this is what you're doing. You're saying that this is a welcoming city. You say that this is a diversity. We have to do and do our actions where our words are. So, thank you for doing this, and let's divest all of these things and make sure that we're not doing business with people. They are putting my people in concentration camps, because that's what they're doing. And we need to find out how they're being treated as well, and we need to keep going with this, okay? So, this is a great step. Let's keep working together. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Will, and I serve as a community organizer for Siren, which stands for Services, Immigrant Rights, and Education at Work. We urge the Rules Committee to direct city staff to report on the trade-offs associated with disinvesting from corporations that work and collude with ICE and reinvesting that money, that life-changing money into our community programs. I greatly appreciate Councilmember Ortiz for bringing this memo forward. I just want to say that now, starting today, October 1st, ICE and DHS will have an astronomical amount of funding of over $175 billion to perpetuate this anti-immigrant agenda, to separate our families, to debilitate our communities, to basically kidnap our parents on their way to work, and to basically intimidate our children from going to school. This is a really scary time for our community, and this is not the kind of industry or future that I see shaping our city of San Jose. I would also want to say that a budget reflects our priorities, and ICE and their family separation and mass deportation agenda is not our community's priorities. So, I greatly appreciate Councilmember Ortiz for bringing this memo forward, and I hope you could still continue this along the path. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
Okay, thank you, members of the public, for coming out and providing your input. Do we have any questions or hands? Anybody want to make a comment on this item?
No, given that this was granted from the Finance Department, I appreciate the analysis, and I will move the item forward.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I just want to ask Maria one question while you're here, since you joined us today.
And I also had a question afterwards, Chair. Sorry about that.
Oh, I didn't.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
You go ahead. I'll, I'll.
Okay. Just, can you describe to me, I mean, I know, I don't know if this is a regular process in terms of evaluating how our investment strategy aligns with our social responsibility policies? Can you just talk a little bit about if there's a regular process for that and how we would normally, you know, evaluate our investment strategy?
We do have a social, sorry. Good afternoon, Maria Ober, Director of Finance. We do have a social responsibility clause in our investment policy, which basically is when we evaluate investments, the day we have money available to invest, we will look at the parameters, and all else being equal, if we evaluate several securities, we will pick the one that best fits with certain policies for the council. For example, green bonds, housing, that kind of, that's kind of how that policy works.
Okay, I appreciate it. And obviously, that when you come back in the spring with your finance report, this is, this will not, doing this additional analysis on our investments won't add any significant workload to your team?
We don't believe so. Given the constraints that we suggested in our response to the workload analysis, we do think this is doable with minimal extra staff. Should this go into something bigger, we will let you guys know, and we will ask for more time or resources to do it. But this initial analysis, we can do.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Candelaus.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank the author again for bringing this forward and thanking everybody who came out to speak on behalf of this. This is obviously something that I'm deeply passionate about, something that I deeply care about, and I look forward to seeing as, seeing the results of this analysis as it progresses. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I'm just going to make the clarification that I made at the meeting a couple of weeks ago that this talks about investing in ICE, but we're also talking about contracting with ICE, I assume, is really the objective here in terms of, since there's not really investments in ICE from outside, from outside entities, but that they would be contracting with ICE? Yes?
Sure, sure, sure. So, when this talks about investment in ICE, it's also talking about companies who receive government contracts through ICE.
Well, that's what I was asking. It's about contracting with ICE, but not, the phrase investing in ICE is kind of not, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that that's what we're talking about.
Companies who are profiting.
Profiting from ICE by contracting with them, yes. Okay. All right, thank you. Let's vote. All right, motion carries four zero. Thank you so much. Our next item is a memo introduced by Councilmembers Ortiz, Candelaus, Campos, and Duan on a plan of action to support the immigrant community. Councilmember Candelaus, do you want to introduce this one?
Yes. Yes, I do. Look, it's straightforward. I think after the actions that we saw last week in District 7, actually, you know, I think this is, this is something that, again, thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Ortiz, we identified some gaps in the work that the community feels that we need to be doing, and so this is a proactive approach and collaboration with, with our partners in the county, and more specifically, you know, those gaps in the training and the work that, that our staff is conducting. You know, I think, I think our staff and through the work of the Rapid Response Network and IPEN and our Office of Racial and Social Equity are doing, are doing, are moving mountains, trying to not just spread information, positive information, and information that's, that's based and rooted in truth, but also recourse for our community and what options we have and what people who not just work for the city but work for small businesses can do when they have an ICE agent at their small business at their doorstep. And so, what this does is, it's a direction to fill those gaps best we can and based on information that we're seeing. And with that, I know we're asking the administration to come back with a workload analysis as well, or is this is just going straightforward? I think on the administration's perspective, this is work that is currently underway and in development. So, if the Rules Committee wants, they can move it forward. Perfect. Then, that being said, that is what I will move. Thank you.
All right, before we go to the rest of the committee, we'll go to public comment.
Shannon, Jeremy, Lucila, and Akemi, please go ahead and make your way to the podium.
Hello again. Long time no talk. Jeremy Bruce with Amigos de Guadalupe. We urge the Rules Committee to direct the city manager's office to partner with the county of Santa Clara to prepare a comprehensive plan of action to better support San Jose's immigrant community in response to increased federal immigration enforcement activity taking place in our city. Like one of our colleagues mentioned, today is the first day federal enforcement will expand significantly with a record $175 billion in immigration enforcement. We ask Rules Committee to work with us and the county of Santa Clara to protect our immigrant communities who have loved and contributed to our city for decades. This plan also includes a provision around data collection and privacy. License plate readers raise massive privacy concerns regarding how our data is used, stored, and shared. These databases give our government agencies more control and tools to surveillance and harm our immigrant communities of color. There have been documented instances in which the data collected by license plate readers have been shared with federal agencies like ICE in violation of state laws and policies. Our communities should be better able to drive, or should be able to drive and walk along our streets without worrying where the information should be shared. In our pursuit for safer streets, we are ignorant of the risk that the information we collect and share may be accessed by other agencies that do not share our values. So, just want to thank Councilmember Ortiz for your leadership, and thank Councilmember Candelaus and Duan for signing on to the memo, and we hope that Rules Committee can pass this out of rules today. Thank you.
Hello again. This is Shannon with the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. We urge the Rules Committee to support this initiative, to direct the city manager's office to partner with the county and prepare a plan to support the immigrant community in San Jose. We find that all four focus areas in this plan are extremely important to coordinate the protection of the immigrant community. On the point of data collection, automatic license plate readers create significant privacy concerns, especially for immigrant communities of color. Since there have been already documented instances where license plates have been shared with ICE, a report to council on how the city is collecting and storing this data is crucial to be transparent to the immigrant community on how their information is being used. San Jose's immigrant communities should be able to move about in public and live their lives without worrying about how their information may be tracked or shared. We are especially excited to see the city's partnership with the county in this matter, and thank you to Councilmembers Ortiz, Campos, Candelaus, and Duan for bringing this to the Rules Committee. The nonprofit community looks forward to partnering with you on this matter. Thank you.
Hi again. Lucila with Working Partnerships, and we wholeheartedly support the memo that is in front of you today. And I want to call a special attention to the piece that talks about making sure that our sports and entertainment industries are safe. And this is because as we are getting ready to welcome folks into the Super Bowl, into, you know, the World Cup and all these exciting events, we want to make sure that we're sending a clear message to the immigrant community that it is safe for them to come to these events, and that we are creating the necessary safety that is happening in there. In addition to those, you know, we also want to make, make sure that we're looking at the sports arenas that are in our areas, make sure that they're also safe. This actually happened in LA where ICE, you know, wanted to station themselves in the Dodger Stadium. And because the Dodgers had a conversation with immigrant communities in there, they were able to stop them from being there. And just being in LA a couple of weeks after that happened, I know that the fans were super excited and super proud to stand with the team that stood with their community. And so, I want to make sure that you all are facilitating the conversations that need to happen to make that possible. Thank you.
Calling the next batch of speakers, Ms. Rain, Lawrence, and Kimberly.
Hello again, and thank you again to Councilmember Ortiz, Councilmembers Candelaus, Campos, and Duan for bringing this comprehensive plan forward. And also, I just want to express really appreciation for the city staff, because as I think was mentioned earlier, that so many, in many of these areas of work, the city manager's office and staff partners have been moving work forward. IPEN has been partnering with the city and the county and many other nonprofits. So, really great gratitude to the city. We have been bringing as much information as we can, learning from the experiences in LA, and, and having all of us be able to learn from those experiences and have the city of San Jose lead is so important. On the, on the data security piece, you may know that it was in the news just recently, a couple of months ago, about how the automatic license plate readers in San Francisco, in Alameda County, data was being shared, perhaps unintentionally, but so we're trying to keep our eyes and ears open to all of the insights we can gain from around the state and bring them here and bring them to your, to your leadership. So, again, thank you very much. I hope you will bring your strong support for this comprehensive plan.
Thank you again. Ms. Rain here with Amigos. So, thank you for bringing this memo forward. I live in District 7, and I hope this can move forward because we have the opportunity to plan, right? We know already what's happening. We blessed enough to say, okay, we can get ready for this, right? Just to put some, some thinking here, right, and why it's so important to have this. They're going to hire 10,000 agents, right? And just for you to know, I'm sure you know this, but to become a police officer, you have to go seven months to a police academy. These people are getting trained in weeks, okay? And the age limit is coming from 21 years old to 18 years old, okay? So, they're giving literally teenagers guns to go chase us. So, we do need a plan, a comprehensive plan, to see what's going to happen when these people come, right? And work with the county, and let's work with the community like what we've been doing. We've been planning since last year in July. After July 4, we've been planning in Amigos de Guadalupe, all scenarios, right? The worst happened. We're here. You know, we have military here, right, coming in all over the country, right? We have concentration camps all over the country, right? So, we need to do something, and we have the opportunity to do so. And I'm very proud that I live in a city that is working towards a comprehensive plan. So, thank you very much.
Hello again. I'm Kimberly Will, and I serve as community organizer with Siren. We strongly support the memo before you today, and thank you also for the councilmembers for bringing it forward. All four elements of the memo uplift our communities as safer when we are united, educated, and overall protected from government abuse. Today is the first day that H.R. 1 of funding of $175 billion will be released to exponentially ramp up immigration, federal enforcement, and separate our families. It is a time for urgency. My fellow colleagues from the IPEN network have addressed each of these crucial components, and, but today, I also want to address the employer education outreach. It's true that our city has not experienced mass immigration raids, but that does not stop ICE and federal law enforcement from conducting mass targeted arrests. Just last week, on September 23rd, our communities in San Jose experienced such grief and trauma when one of our immigrant neighbors was arrested and ripped from their workplace at Conexion in front of their own colleagues. The ICE agents wrongfully represented themselves as police, didn't show ID, and failed to produce a warrant. This terrifying, heartbreaking event unfortunately serves as a sobering moment of clarity and an urgency for unity. We must educate our employers to protect our workplaces. We know that education serves as one of our strongest, most powerful tools, and we at Siren have been conducting and sharing new rights trainings in businesses to defend our constitutional rights and protect our communities from abuse. But this info must be shared, and your, and your network and resources as a city council have the power to reach more of our communities. Through updated reports on ongoing education outreach efforts to our businesses and workplaces, we can create a more comprehensive, coordinated employer protocols to prevent a tragedy like the one in Conexion from ever happening again. When our immigrant loved ones are under attack, we must stand up and fight back to demand protections and of safety and privacy that we all deserve. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon again. My name is Lawrence. So, today, I just want to let you know that I want to first thank Councilmember Peter Ortiz for doing his part to help, to help out those, to help the vulnerable and helping our immigrant, immigrants here. And I also want to thank Councilmember, also him alongside with Councilmembers Campos, Candelaus, and Duan for doing their part in, with the memorandum for C2. Starting now, federal, federal, federal enforcement will, will begin expanding regulations tomorrow, and we, we have the power to ensure that, that we keep our, keep our communities safe. One thing to make note is that on September 16th, Santa Clara County supervises unanimously approved of supervisor arenas and units, community-driven cross-sector referral to develop a comprehensive enforcement response plan. And as another part is that SB 54 restricts California state and local law enforcement for using resources to investigate, detain, arrest people for immigration enforcement purposes. But as you may know, ICE continues to be, continues to be a roadblock as they continue to violate human rights. They continue to demonstrate cruel, abusive, and inhumane actions. And now, for our.
And now, for our city, we must, we must do everything we can to protect our immigrants, and I demand that the Rules Committee will work with us and the County of Santa Clara County to protect our immigrant counties, communities who have loved and contributed to our city for decades. When they attack one, they go for all of us. And when things take a turn, we stand together, united. And very importantly, we must ensure that everyone's educated, united, and coming together to ensure that we do our part, not only to keep our people safe, but also our city as well. We can be the strong leaders here for tomorrow, and we can continue to lead the way when we do our part to take action immediately and protect those, the vulnerable and those in need. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you for everyone for your comment. Now, we're going to start with Councilmember Duan.
Thank you, Chair. The city of San Jose has always been an immigrant city. The city was built by immigrants. Their contribution to this economy, the community, and the neighborhoods, regardless of their district and our civic lives. You know, in recent months, we have seen increase in federal immigration enforcement activity within our city boundary. And just a little bit more than a week ago, right in District 7 at the Conexión, which have disrupted the sense of safety, security, and trust among our resident and our immigrant mixed-status household. And I will not stand for it. The goal of this proposal is not to duplicate the existing effort, but to provide and coordinate both the city, the county, with a framework that we can mitigate the harms, preserve the civil liberty, protect the public safety by enabling people to come forward for service and emergency without fear. A city that allows people to live in fear, it's a city failure. And it's a city that is less safe for everyone. When our immigrants are afraid to dial 911 when they need help, to report abuse, to access health or social services, the consequences ripple into our community. And I want to say thank you to Councilmember Ortiz for leading this initiative, and my colleague, Councilmember Candelas, Councilmember Campos, who contribute to shaping this important initiative. And I believe that my colleagues will support this proposal and move this memorandum for approval because it's the right thing to do. And I care about us. I care about our community, and I'm here to support you. Thank you.
Councilmember Candelas.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to also add an opportunity for Councilmember Ortiz to address the committee and to talk about any issues that I didn't bring up in his memo as well.
No, thank you so much, Councilmember Candelas. Really appreciate this opportunity to speak to a memo. My office worked really hard in writing. And I understand I've been at this committee quite a few times, and my apologies if my name is getting a little annoying to be seen on the page, but, you know, historically, you know, East San Jose and the immigrant community has not been made a priority by the city. And many times, I'm pushed to introduce these memos to Rules, or they just, you know, blatantly will not be prioritized. And so, I just want to speak to that. I do want to also elevate the great work of Zulma Maciel and Angel Rios. I know this is a major priority to them. They're doing an excellent job in, you know, providing support to our immigrant community, and they've been a lifeline to many of the organizations who are here in this room. The main reason why we wanted to make sure that we had this specific direction is twofold, right? Obviously, to make sure we're collaborating and coordinating properly with the county and making sure that we're not repeating the same work, but also specifically in preparation for 2026, because there will be a lot of gathering at sports events, and I want to make sure that, you know, we get the biggest bang for our buck for our economy, and we won't get that if families are afraid to go out to their local restaurant, or their local bar, or to some of our viewing parties. And so, I think having a plan of action for that is very important. And then also, the flock cameras and ALPR cameras. I've spoken to the chief of police multiple times. He's confident that our data is being protected, but I keep being, individuals from the public continue to come up to me, and they have concerns, and they have questions. And so, he offered to do a presentation during a city council meeting if we would put this in the memo. And so, I thought that was a good idea, and so I wanted to move forward with it. So, I thank you guys for, you know, looking at this memo, and I hope you guys will vote in support of it. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Foley.
Thank you. I appreciate having the memo come forward. And Councilmember, I want to acknowledge all of your work in this area and how important it is to remind us of what we should be looking at in connection with the immigrant community. You're always lifting up your community and the areas within the San Jose that are underserved, so I truly appreciate that, and I don't mind seeing your memos coming through at all. I just want to make that public statement.
Thank you. And I just wanted, I wanted to also acknowledge Zulma, who's here today, and I'm not going to call, you know, put you on the spot to answer any questions right now, but just, you know, we've appreciated the briefings we've received in our office about the work that you and your team are doing. There's a lot going on internally in the city to make sure that we're prepared, and we know, and everybody knows where the safe spaces are, how we handle those safe spaces, what our procedures will be when things happen. But the gap, and we've asked this question before when we've had these briefings, the gap often is, is the public aware, is, does the public know how they should coordinate with the city when something happens? How do employers get informed? How do people know? How do we do the work on this together? And so, this just kind of helps stitch that together, and I think it's valuable for us to continue to make sure that that's part of this. But I know, and I know it has been, but I certainly just wanted to appreciate the work that we're already doing and the work that we'll do going forward. And it's going to be an evolving thing for the next few years that we probably will have to always be making changes to, and I know that our staff will be on top of that. So, thank you, and your team. I think that's the end of comments, so let's vote. Okay, that motion carries 4-0, so we are on to open forum.
No public comment.
No public comment. We are adjourned at 2:37 PM.
We have one comment.
Oh.
Oh, one just came up, sorry.
One public comment is making its way down here. Then we are adjourned at 2:37 PM. Thank you.